Call the meeting to order for this evening. The first thing is to approve the minutes from the city council workshop and also the regular city council meeting.
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't have those January 5th meeting minutes, the workshop minutes prepared yet, so it'd just be the 17th council regular, regular city council meeting minutes.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 17th.
The motion was approved, was.
A second.
Second, okay, motion carries. The second thing would be what I'd like to do is welcome everybody here tonight. And appreciate you guys, just as a council does, that everybody's showing up. And is there anybody that would like to speak this evening so we could add them to the agenda? Specifically, Galen would like to, Galen Stumpf? So where would you like to add them, where do we add them, Bob, to the agenda?
Typically, if we have visitors, right to the front.
Right to the front?
Unless there's a certain item they want to speak on.
Okay. And I'd also like, would like to recognize Bob Casper, who is our current Morrison County Commissioner, appreciate that. Okay, so, Galen, I think.
We have to approve the agenda with the.
Okay. So do I get an approval for the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Don approves it and Jackie seconds it, carried?
Just have to vote on that, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Galen.
You are up, sir.
In the chair.
We should be agreeing light there.
Is that green light on?
Is it on?
It only goes for the TV, but won't be for the room.
Okay, first of all, let me introduce myself to anyone who may not know me, I'm Galen Stumpf. My wife and I are owners of property within the Piers City limits. And that gives me a right to be here, I hope. To be honest here, I did watch the video of the meeting when Dave Fisher and Toby Egan had their discussion. And after watching that, I had more questions and answers. I don't know much about stabilizing ground through the winter, I really don't care about that. They talked about wetlands, it's really none of my business. But to me, my business, or our business, as city property owners, I would like to know what the cost of the proposed project for the golf course initially is, was, or if it is still in the same number now today. Can anybody tell me that number?
The original cost was about $800,000.
Okay.
Now we're sitting about 1.2, I think, was at that meeting. At that Thursday night, it was brought out, it was about 1.2, or depending on fines, if any, possibly 1.3 million.
So we're over budget by about 300,000 to 400,000?
We actually started on, that actually started at a million.
A million, yeah.
Okay, so if I'm correct, we're now at 1.2 to 1.3?
That's correct.
Okay. How is this being paid for? Or who's paying for this project?
Well, most of it is being taken out of our enterprise funds. There's no, there's no taxes being raised to pay for a golf course. It's money that comes out of our enterprise fund.
Can you just, or can you explain enterprise funds to me?
Our enterprise funds would be the golf course itself, would be electric fund, would be solid waste. And what am I missing?
That's it?
That's the budget.
So there's no tax dollars to the citizens being applied to this?
No.
Okay. And then, to this day, would you say that we are under budget, over budget? How much have you spent so far to this day in that project?
It's roughly $650,000.
Somewhere in that neighborhood, I think.
Okay, are you comfortable with that, at this point? You, the council?
The city has done our park board and Bob, they've done a lot to be very transparent, use the cut costs and do it in a way that's doing it in the right way, not just cutting costs to under, undercut and not do it appropriately. They're not doing things to miss that's going to cost us down the road.
Correct.
So I definitely feel very comfortable with where things are and how they've all, how it's all played out. And they've been very transparent, you know, in asking those questions and having those answered and done it in a way that I feel is very honorable and very, very open. And our park board has done a really good job at managing that as well.
Does the public know where we're sitting financially, is it their business or not their business to know where we stand financially?
Everything is public knowledge.
Okay. It is published? And where is that published?
That's done online, isn't it, where they can request it anytime?
It's not necessarily published, but it would be in your packets every park board meeting. I update the numbers as far as where we sit financially and.
Okay.
Starting budget, and we just, since we shut down in the fall, we updated our budget, so now we know exactly where we're at and what we have to complete yet, so.
So.
It is discussed in our meetings where we, where we are at, if you are present or watch it, you know, online, and you can become aware of where we're sitting.
Okay, okay.
And we encourage and want our citizens to be very involved.
You know, I'm not here to corner anybody, however, I hear so much, or false rumors or rumors in the public. I understand the council or the city bought a caterpillar bulldozer, and I hear it's been trouble, you know, see, these are things that I hear, true or false, I mean.
We took out a warranty with it when we purchased it. Most of the stuff that if it's gone wrong, has been under warranty and.
Okay, well, see, these are things that, and I'm not going to question people because I don't know the details until I come here and talk to people who should know and do know, I believe.
You know, I, I've just kind of, I'm kind of late to the game on this, Galen, but you know, I've, you know, I've personally seen inflation over the last year or so too, so some of those costs are inflated because of material.
Well, just energy costs, just energy costs alone.
Right, so, Galen does bring up a good point, and I don't know how we would do it, but is there some way that, can we, I don't know if I'm stepping on somebody's feet, can we publish it online, what it is, and then so, because not everybody's got access to a computer and to watch these.
Could you have it in the record once a month?
Yeah.
I mean, just let people know. To me, people have nothing, no, people have nothing to hide, hide nothing, so I'd put it out there as much as you could, that would keep all the, the people that are the naysayers or the negative ones, I mean, I'm not a golfer, but if this what the city wants to do, more power to them. But let's do it right. And I'm saying, and I think communication is the right way to do it, whether it's good or bad, if something's going bad, there, let us know, I mean, it's not going to change anything.
And that's where I think we also too, like, really encourage individuals to show up here, and they can get it from a horse's mouth by coming here, these are open meetings, and we want to encourage our citizens to be here and be informed, and that's why I encourage citizens to vote and be a part of the decisions that we're making. And so, you know, I also want to be cognizant, not that we don't want to post things in the record and do those things, but we are also financing a budget and running a city, and the more we vote here, we want there every week and do those, that's expensive and it's an added expense.
Okay.
There are freer ways to do it, like having it on our website.
I like that idea.
You know, and having something like that available, yes, we understand that not everybody has access to a computer, but the library, which we, we do support heavily in our city, is an option for people to come as well. You know, so there are ways that people can be informed without kind of hearing it through the grapevine, and it does take a little bit of effort, but the effort is so worth it when we're involved in our city. And so, you know, the more we can get involved and ask the questions, I'm so grateful that people do, I have people email me and I like to get back to them on that too. But, again, we, we want to be as transparent as possible.
Okay, okay.
Those things, and that's why we have these open meetings, why we come to our city, why we, you know.
Correct, so, if I understand this correctly, a resident in Piers who owns the house and pays taxes pays $0 towards the golf pro, golf course project? Is that correct? Okay, and if you go over budget, which is going to happen, I get it, you'll just borrow money, or, I mean, how, how are you going to deal with that? Because I'm sure your budgets are tight like everybody else's, that's just the way businesses are. I mean, I'm not naive to business, we run, everybody here runs a business, whether it be a household, household or a farm or whatever, we all run our little business, and usually money is pretty, it's usually spoken for. So my question is, I mean, I'm not here to corner it again, but, so would you, can you borrow money, are there?
We have a five-minute time limit on a topic.
Yeah.
We didn't go through those again this time, but I think it would be prudent that we review the rules.
Yeah, that's true, I think we could, it's been five minutes?
Yeah.
I haven't been keeping a timer, but.
Yeah, it's 7:11, so.
Okay, yeah, so we have a five-minute time limit on people to speak, but can, can I speak to it, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
We can't continue to.
Don is on the, on the park board, so I would just like to ask, so I think Galen's got a decent question or a relevant question about how, if we need additional funds, how are we going to raise them, I'm assuming through the enterprise?
Through, through the enterprise fund, we do have some still sitting there.
Okay, that's fair.
It's obviously not an endless pit, you know, it's not a money pit that's got it forever, but we are sitting where we think we are fine with what we have to finish the project.
Okay, one last question, I wish I would have realized the five-minute deadline, which I respect. When do you want this completed, when is your goal to have this completed by?
2024 mid-season, July, when I say mid-season, middle of summer, July.
Okay, all right.
Goal right now is it will be seeded by next fall, by fall of '23. You either seed in the spring or seed in the fall, and because of irrigation, we're not going to make the spring, because they're, they're the ones that are behind, so we'll be seeding everything in the fall.
So you've got four and a half months to get it done, basically. April 15th to August 31st, I mean, just using, using the calendar, which, I'm not saying it can't be done, but.
So the course itself is, is roughed in.
Right.
Everything is there, right now they're working on, they're not now, they were working on putting the irrigation underground. Once the irrigation is underground and that part is done, basically what's left is to bring the black dirt back over, start picking rocks, leveling it, getting how everything has to be. Seed, the greens, I believe is going to get seeded first, because you don't want to drive on fresh grass to get to the greens. Once that's done, the fairways will be done, and then it's, let it grow.
Okay.
So, yeah, thank you, Galen, and if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out, and then I'll, I'll ask for some thoughts too, Jackie, so I don't, I know Kyle hasn't said anything, if you'd like to say something.
Yeah, I think you guys have addressed a lot of the questions that he had, so.
I think so, I think maybe it's something we could put on the, on our website too, Bob, maybe every month or two months or something, just throw something on there, how it's, how it's going, that way people can address, address that.
One thing I will say about the dozer, we're operating that dozer about, excuse me, about 60% of the cost of what it would cost us to have a contractor out there operating that dozer, and keep in mind, we have a world-class operator out there building a golf course. So we're operating that dozer very efficiently, and that includes fuel, warranty, labor, plus maintenance expenses, so. That was a great purchase, actually, the way we're operating that dozer, and you know equipment, Galen, and you know what it costs to maintain equipment, but that's actually been a really good dozer for 2,000 hours of work we've gotten done out there, so. But, yeah, and I'd love to share the numbers individually with people, I mean, I have zero issue with that, so, I don't, I think that's a great idea, we'll put on the website, and, so, thank you.
Thank you, Galen, say hi to Carla for me, okay. So the next thing on the agenda is the 2024 street lighting feasibility study, and I would like to see what people's thoughts, are you going to talk about that, Jared?
It's planned, yeah.
Awesome.
Unless you guys want to run with it.
No, go for it.
All right. Good day, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, on your package tonight is our memorandum for, as you mentioned, the feasibility, feasibility lighting study for the 2024 project. Basically, this is a, we are in the early stages of our design for that 2024 project, and the next step we're looking for from you guys is decision on how you want to, what kind of lights you want to install, or what kind of, where we want to go with that road as far as lighting up the road corridor. For this project, the lights are currently mounted on the power poles at intersections in mid-block, and there are a few overhead power, power lines that cross the street. But if you want to look at figure two and, two and, or one and two, these are broken out into the same, same sections of street that we did our feasibility study for 2024 project. The west sector, sector is Summer and Cassie Alley and First Avenue West, and then the east sector is First Avenue Northeast and Peter Avenue. On these two figures, we show a rough layout of what, what those new lights would look like, and where they would be, where they'd be installed, based on a preliminary photometric analysis. So that would be basically splitting the roads into thirds for the most part, instead of one at mid-block. Also in the memorandum is figure number three, which are the three lighting options provided. The first option is more of the decorative lighting that you'll see on Main Street. The second option is more of the utilitarian lighting style, which is what we installed on Third Avenue. The third option is basically more of your, more of your basic fiberglass power pole. Each of these options obviously has a different estimated construction cost to them. Going through that here, the decorative Main Street lighting for the layouts shown in figure one and two, that cost is roughly $260,000 for construction only, so it's your materials and paying the contractor to do so. And for the utilitarian lighting option, like closely related to the Third Avenue project, $172,000. And then for your buried fiberglass, $140,000. We've had a few different kind of updates throughout this, this study, meeting with a couple members of the council and city staff. Based on those discussions, we are recommending the city move forward with the, the lighting option number two, same as the Third Avenue project. Additional scope was asked for at one of these meetings, and that's where figure four comes into play. Apparently, there, there is some lighting issues along First Avenue Southeast. I believe, do you remember, Bob, which pole that was, which light that was, it was the corner of First and Oak?
It's the one closest to Edward Street, yeah.
Yeah, First and Oak, yeah. So basically, we would be replacing all those, all those lights along First, from Oak to Camnic, and then also the couple that are on Camnic between First and Peter Avenue. That additional, if the staff, the city, city council decides to move forward with providing lighting option number two for those additional streets there, the estimated construction cost for those streets only is a, is $125,000. And with that, that basically summarizes our memorandum here, I'm open for any questions you may have.
So I, just from reviewing this, Jared, I like the lights we have on Main Street.
Okay.
And, but I, I don't think we need to have those lights on the, the sub streets, so I like your idea of going to option number two, the one for 172. And I like the way they're set up, so, and I don't believe those have to be painted, right, is that, yeah, so we don't have an expenses in painting them, I think that's a great idea. And I actually, I'm not real big on how the fiberglass ones install versus the aluminum ones, whereas the aluminum ones, if, if, if somebody, somebody hits one by accident, they'll bust off at the bolts, and then they'll fall over, and you're not necessarily ruining the, the light post itself, and with the fiberglass ones, if you hit those things hard enough, they bust, you got to get a whole new pole. And I think, I don't know if Eric was in, or, we have a couple of those aluminum ones too, or one.
We've had, we're going to keep one on stock, so, I don't know if that's come in yet or not, but that's the plan, then we would have one spare instead of two different ones.
And I'm not big on having three different kinds of light poles running around in town either, we might, we got to have some kind of consistency, and, and like I said, Main Street is a special, a special road, just because people are driving through town, we get people come through, we want to make those lights look a little bit better, but I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts, Kyle?
Uh, no, I think that's kind of what we had decided that matched Third Avenue, so.
Okay. So I guess the action we are looking for tonight is, first one is to move forward with the lighting option number two for the original scope of our 2024 project, and the second would be if you want to add the additional First Avenue Southwest and Camnic lights to the project.
So do we vote first, Bob, on the, on the initial one, just to do the project that's suggested, and then go to add it, or do you, or do we want to discuss the thoughts of adding that on to, on to it before we vote?
I think the way Jared laid it out was good, you know, we just vote on option number two and then discuss.
Yeah.
Adding Camnic Street and First Avenue South as a separate option.
Okay, so.
So to be clear, it'll be the 172, that's the current construction that we're looking at, and then to add on is an additional 125, correct?
Yep, the 172 is for construction only, yep, so no engineering or construction services, and we'll be in that as well, we'll not be in that, sorry.
And that's related to the 2024 road projects initially?
Correct.
Now we're saying we need some improvements to other things that wouldn't be under the 2024 project.
We can talk about that when we, after that motion, after that first motion, yeah.
So, can you hear a motion on the initial?
I'll make the motion to approve the initial construction of 172.
Okay, Kyle makes the motion.
And I'll second that.
And Don seconds the motion for the improvement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So I think now we want to go and talk about the additional cost, is that what you're thinking, Kyle, and then?
Yeah, I mean, another $125,000, I just want to make sure that that's necessary improvements that we need here.
The big thing is the light that's closest to the villa or on Oak, corner of Oak and that, so we spent, I don't know, 2,500 bucks last year with an electrician trying to get that to work. Worked for a month before it went back out, and it's not the pole, it's the, it's the lighting that, or the electric getting to the pole. And that is just getting to the age where we're going to just continually be putting some cash out there. So one of the thoughts would be while we're doing this other stuff in town was to get a price, and let's get that underground service fixed and get it, so it's good again.
So what we found on First Avenue Southeast appears when they did that curb and gutter, when they constructed that street, to put the streetlights in, they just laid wire right along the backside of that curb, you know, typically now we're putting conduit, two-inch conduits, so if you have a failure, you can pull new wire in at any time. Plus, it just protects that wire, and like we said, we found a lot of breaks in that wire, and the steel structures, I mean, they're streetlights that are steel, which is fine, but I mean, they're rusting and they're getting to the end of their age, I don't know how old they are, but they've been there long before I started here. So it would be a good fix to fix that wire, one thing to keep in mind, the Peter, or, these lights are fed actually from Peter Avenue, so we would put a service point kind of right where Peter Avenue and Camnic Street intersect, just north of that point, that's where it's currently sourced from. So it would be a, it would be a reasonable and clean way to serve those lights on First Avenue, because we'd upgrade that service and control right by Peter Avenue anyway, that's why this project would tie, and we certainly could do it later or separately as well.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of have the same concerns Kyle has, but I can see, you know, the need for the maintenance, but it's like, where do you kind of draw the line on the whole thing too, I don't, what do you think, Jackie?
I, I trust the engineer to make the right calls on that, so, I don't know, I don't have an opinion, that's really strong on that one. We need to do what's best to get it done, Bob knows my opinion on Peter Avenue, period, so.
So is this something that's got to happen in the next handful of years anyway, is that what we're talking about?
If we want that specific light to work, I mean, we're going to try like, heck, this summer to get those lights fixed again, you know, that one light fixed, but it's, it's just painful to keep locating that and digging it up and patching it and patching it, so.
I understand that, I just, you know, once we get into the project, we're probably going to be finding other things too, so I, I agree, it probably needs to be done, and it sounds like it needs to be done, but I'm just thinking as we roll forward with the project, we're going to see other costs coming up, and then, then all of a sudden, is that one that we really need, we really need to take on as we hit other stuff, because you never know what you're going to run into once we start doing the other projects, that'd be, that's my concern, yes.
Yeah, and if it leans that way, Eric Hafke and I have to discuss options of fixing it temporarily for the next 10 years too, if we have to hit it overhead or something like that too, so.
So the 125, though, to be clear, would basically fix all underground, it would get everything working as it should, then it'd be done.
And replace those poles that are at the end of their life, I mean, that's part of it too, eventually they will.
Mainly, you said on First Avenue, I can see from that picture, but the ones on Peter were already included in the other one, correct? So we're really just adding First Avenue Southeast.
It's a chunk for.
Total of seven of them.
Oh, seven lights?
Three on Peter were considered, were in the original 2024 project.
So three on Camnic.
Three on Camnic and then four on.
Four on First, got it.
So where's your Peter, you're on First Avenue.
Yeah, there it is.
And I feel like sometimes, once you bid these projects too, if you add another seven lights, your cost per pole kind of comes down too, and if you mobilize.
Is that something we can, as long as we're working in that area anyways, are we getting some economies of scale or not really, and something like this?
I mean, we've got for total number of lights here. 20 light poles, ballpark, total. I don't know if the additional seven will, they add too much to that, but at a certain point, you know, we, I guess we don't need to have that decision tonight as far as if you want to include it in the project, we can move forward with designing it, and then you could do it at a later year, if you would like to, I don't see an issue with that.
Yeah, I like that idea.
If the, the cost itself is what we were, what the construction costs, that is, that is an option, like Bob said, it doesn't need to be part of this project, it's not like we're, we're doing the road, and now's the time to do the sanitary and waterman.
Yeah, and then we have to design, we have it all done already, so if we have to move forward, we, all the, everything's designed and laid out for us, right?
Yeah, so everything as far as restoration, we haven't looked into it too much, which based off an aerial here, you might have, might have some curb, I mean, if that existing wire was right behind the curb, then maybe, depending how, how deep it was, but there shouldn't be a whole lot of restoration. Along First. Camnic has a sidewalk along that side, no, they don't, not for that block. So, yeah, I mean, I don't see an issue with having it be its, an isolated project in the future, if you want to go that route, or adding it to what's our next one, 2027-ish?
27, 2030, yeah.
Yeah. We're not gonna be in the same area of town, but.
Could we just move forward with the design part of it? And then in the next, call it six months, I mean, then say, take a hard look at, again, finance. Again, we'll have another round of that. Could we then budget for that or look at that at least?
I think it's a good way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
Believe I had mentioned, you know, during at least the feasibility of the road project, you know, really we have, almost up until we start construction to kind of cut, if you want, from the project, you know? Uh, it comes to a certain point where maybe cutting something is, you know, you might be paying to cut that type of thing. But yeah, these are throughout the sign, you should be, it's up to you, I don't know what you want actually constructed, so.
Well, I just wanted to make sure if we're like locked in, if we make that decision to spend a hundred and twenty-five tonight or if we can just kind of have some time to.
Yeah, no, this is, like I said, these are just the, I mean, that number is, is an, is an estimated construction cost. You won't know that number until actually you bid the project. But yeah, that is just, that one twenty-five is for construction only, so.
Okay. Yeah, I would make a motion, then he can include that in the design and kind of have that planned out. And then somewhere in the future, whether it's six months or a year, we should decide whether or not we're gonna include that in this upcoming twenty twenty-four project. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'd agree.
Okay, Jackie, second set. So, um, all in favor of, uh, doing the design work but, um, uh, not doing the construction, uh, at this point, uh, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, motion carried.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jared. So then, in, do we need to cover, I think the next thing on the agenda is the twenty twenty-four project finance update?
Did you, yeah, did you wanna get Bobby on there? Did you wanna get Bobby on the agenda, or on the agenda, but did you want him to talk right now or just at the end?
Would you like to speak tonight, Bob?
I don't know if I need to.
Okay.
Uh, you, you're welcome to, I mean, if you want to.
I can, for just.
Okay, sorry about that, I should've.
Do I know?
Yeah, I'll recognize you.
Okay.
Yes. First off, I would say it's, it's an honor to come before you, gentlemen and lady. Thank you for having me. I hope the very best for Piers. I know there's been, uh, some tumult in the last few weeks and it, it appears that, uh, the smoke is clearing and you guys are getting your feet back on the ground. And I'm, I'm, I'm happy for you. I think Piers is a great place to live and, and looks like it's in good hands. I'm glad to hear that. I know there's some more, some more fills to be made, but, uh, we've got some good people in place to make some wise decisions, so I'm happy for you. Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Bob, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Bob. Um, finance update?
So page sixteen of your packet, I did spend some time with John going through this. And it's just the finance part of the twenty twenty-four project. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on it tonight, but, so one thing our engineer, Scott Hedlund, always told me and I, kind of rings true all the time now, is when we look at a project, we start big and we start not knowing exactly what the costs are, but we kind of bring it in a little more with the feasibility study and then with the design. And then when we actually go to bid and then when we actually build the project. So this is kind of that big picture finance, um, what we're looking at right now. And it's kind of getting clear, more clearly defined as we go, so. If, most of you have seen this already, we're just gonna, I'm just gonna kind of keep updating it as we go, so. The next thing, um, Eric's been working with Minnesota Power to go through those streets that we're looking at reconstruction and actually figuring out what it's gonna cost to underground those electric utilities. So we should have that within, uh, the next month or two, I suppose. So that's all I had on that.
Okay, I appreciate that, uh, update, Bob. Uh, the next thing, uh, that we have on our agenda is, uh, the mayoral position. And, um, um, I would like to have Bob kind of go over our options. We, we've discussed them, I have an idea of what they are, but I think Bob can probably relay the message a little bit better.
Sure. So last meeting, we declared, this council declared a vacancy for mayor. So the task in front of the council is to appoint a new mayor. And the options there would be to simply appoint right now without soliciting applications or open it up like's been done in the past to residents of the city. If they're interested in becoming mayor, they would apply. Council would review applications, select interviewees, make interviews, and select a mayor. So those are the options right now is to appoint a mayor. And then, um, if it's within one of these council seats or clerk seats, then that position could be, um, would be appointed as well in a future date.
Thoughts, you guys?
I guess I, I would like to see the transparency and let's open it up for applications. I'm not saying that anybody here might not get it, but people sort of spoke loud this last time. And, and I think being transparent, letting them, if somebody wants to apply, I don't know why we wouldn't allow them to.
Well, and I think too, like, and Bob, in reading some of the stuff that you had gone through and, um, and asked about, you know, with the lawyers and different things like that with, you know, possibly doing a special election or doing things like that. And I know that it had said kind of like, but I felt like the way that it was addressed was more for the vacancy of the treasurer and a potential city council and not necessarily for the vacancy of a mayor. And so when I went and looked at it and it kind of had said like, we would have to basically change our ordinance to say what we would have a special election for. And I get costs are associated with that, but I've gotten lots of calls that the city deserves to have a voice in, in electing a new mayor since the term is still full, essentially. Um, and I, I definitely don't have, um, I definitely think that something like that is important. Um, again, with how close this last mayoral election was. Um, and I, I, I mean, I guess, yes, I understand the piece of us filling that role and it going up to, um, you know, the public and having people that want to, um, apply do so. Um, but I just, I'm, I'm a little leery on putting that in our hands. Not that there weren't, were not qualified people to do that. Um, but I just feel, you know, individuals in our city deserve to have a vote and a say. Who they would want as mayor. And so I'm just a little, I'm just a little hesitant on, on, you know, I know that there's costs associated with that and, and what that looks like. I just, I would like to have our, our city have a vote. So I guess, you know, that was kind of like when I was reading it, I was like, okay, well, I get that, you know? But then it goes on to say if the city does decide to hold a special election to fill a vacancy, it must adopt an ordinance specifying the circumstances under which an election would be held. So like, was it so that, I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around like kind of what was decided, like what, what the kind of final outcome was with the lawyer and like that kind of piece. Um, because I feel like it really wasn't really directed at, at what we're doing right here. So that kind of piece, it's a little, you know, cause it talks a lot about, well, the mayor would have the, this final say unless they would, you know, the fill-in would be the one going for the position and then it, you know? So I just, in that piece, I know that it's, it's pretty gray and it's a little as clear as mud in my opinion, but I also, you know? I mean, as most laws and, and stuff are. Um, you know, so I just, again, wanna put the power back into our city and into our residents who vote. And so that's kind of my philosophy on that. And we have that. Now, I don't know what that means with, you know, because we still have a two-year term that's available there. And then it, the, how long was, John, how long is your term? Is it four years?
Four years, yeah.
So then, then it does say that if the term is more than four years and it's unexpired, then we could hold this. Like, it was really unclear on how the language was written, because we'd have to fill a four-year term.
Do you wanna clarify, Bob? I, I mean, I, I think my understanding of it was if it's under two years, you appoint. And if it's, uh, longer than four-year term, you can appoint for two years and we'd have a special election with the next election.
That's correct.
We don't hold a special election in the middle of the year twice, frankly, is what she's coming to, right?
It is, I looked up, you know, I looked up on her League of Cities, you know, or whatever. And, uh, it does, it says that, uh, it, the law does not require a special election. So that there.
It doesn't require.
There goes the fog again. It is a little foggy. Yeah, I think it's.
The city hasn't earned it.
Yeah.
So I, sorry, I asked the attorney a specific question today and it was, one council member suggested we run a special election for the mayor position. Is this an option or is the city required to appoint the position? And I did send this out in an email and she just, she cites a statute and said they shall appoint, which is mandatory language.
Okay.
So we don't really have an option to have a special election on this case for mayor.
That was my understanding from her response, yeah.
Appreciate your thoughts though, Jackie. I mean, I ultimately.
And I had a lot of people ask for it, to vote too. I've had emails come in and stuff, so I just wanna, you know, put it out there and just to understand and get it actually out here so people can hear, like, why we wouldn't hold on.
No, that's great. I had a lot of people.
Have that transparency out for our citizens.
I had people approach me with this, the same thing, actually, cause they thought, you get, the, the council appoints. And I go, yeah, they were kind of surprised, but, um, no, so, and Don's got some great, got a great idea too. And I don't, Kyle, what, uh?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I guess out of, at the very least, my thought tonight was either schedule a workshop and discuss all of the options that we may have here with, if we were to appoint you, we'd still have a vacant position. What are we gonna do there? We also have an open treasurer position, so we've got a lot of moving pieces here that I thought maybe a workshop would be better to try and discuss. But if the, if you all agree to just open it up at the mayor, we gotta start there then probably, I would guess.
Yeah, that's a vacant position.
Wait to see what happens, cause if then we appoint a different mayor, then technically we don't have an open council. John would go back to his council seat, so. Uh, I mean, I think city treasurer, I've thought about that, so I'll just give my thoughts on that right now. And I don't think I, I would be, uh, in favor of combining those positions. For a few different reasons, I think, but I think the time commitment for one person, if you really truly want them to be reviewing and doing the bank rec, I think that should be a separate position. And I think it's nice to have this, uh, another person and their opinion, checks and balances. They sit on committees. Linda sat on the finance committee. So another person would really be very involved with the finances, even more into the detail than I probably would be in, in a clerk slash treasurer position. So let's kind of make that on that.
I would agree with you.
Especially the checks and balances and, you know, I think, um, Kyle and I are really big about being as transparent as we possibly can and doing what's best for the city and being physically responsible and doing that stuff. And, um, you know, I think having a treasurer just has that checks and balances in there. And, I mean, I think Kyle does a fantastic job, not, not that you aren't the person that couldn't handle it, but it's a big role.
It is, yeah.
Linda's spent a lot of time doing that and it's one of those things that, again, I think we should, you know, hire out for.
Yeah, I think so too, cause that's a, uh, an added burden not to Kyle and.
Well, and, and I think if we, if we as the council make that decision, we're kind of locking future councils into that until they change it and it may become harder to fill this role with a combined position like that, so.
I'm in favor of scheduling a workshop to discuss the next steps with the mayor.
Don, does that make sense?
I don't have any problem with that.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Three days. So I could post tomorrow for a meeting on Friday.
I would like to, uh, one thing I'd like to though, if anybody who would like to fill the role of mayor to either fill out some type of form saying they actually want it, um, want the position. Uh, because this is such a crucial position for, uh, the city of Piers that we all wanna have somebody that wants it.
Typically, I think they fill out the job application form.
Yeah.
And, and then you have to put down credentials, you have to put, you know, you give a listing of all the different things, so yes.
We have a resume to say this if you would be applying for.
Yes.
Right.
Do we wanna do that before we even try and have this workshop? If that's the decision that we're making?
Well, if we're, if we're gonna do the workshop, then I don't think we should be asking for applications as of yet. Until we understand what we're wanting at the workshop.
Yep, that's what I'm asking.
That would be my opinion.
So I didn't know if you guys had made up your mind or if you're opening it up or not.
Yeah, that makes sense.
At the workshop, we can discuss whatever we need to, if, if we think the mayor should be a certain way or what they should have to, maybe we can, uh, critique the job application. And we can ask certain questions, if you wanna do that from the workshop.
Okay, Bob, you good with that?
Sure. When would you like to schedule that?
And then we can, we can schedule a workshop, then could we do it with the manager, um, position over at the clubhouse too? Is that kind of, we add that into the workshop as well, you guys? Is that what your thoughts are?
I guess we wanna talk about that now then. So we had several, I'll fill the council's, we've had several people that applied for that. And tonight, starting at four, we started doing some interviewing. We, the interviews that we had, we had some good, strong candidates. And we're actually looking at the possibility of, of starting to enter into a, uh, a wage negotiation with who we think would be that lead person. Who was at the interviews was Bob, myself, Zach, and Rick Shabluski. We asked a series of nine, I guess, ten questions, you know, that they answered. And we went through all sorts of different things and, uh, that's up to the council if they would like us to go into that. But, um, we can't say who it is and we can't say what we're, the range is what, nineteen to twenty-five that we approved as a council? So it's gonna be somewhere in that range that we will be offering. Unless you would like to wait and, and hold off until we have a, uh, the workshop and then discuss that.
When are we looking at having wage negotiations?
We would probably start within the next day or so.
I mean, our thoughts was to have me work with the candidate and come up with a agreeable wage and present that to the city council.
To try to have that at our next council meeting, just because by the time that person were to give some type of a, uh, of a notice and they get done, we're gonna be into our busy season. I mean, there won't be golfing going on, but there's a lot of stuff to do before we ever get to that. There won't be camping going on, but there's still a lot of stuff to do for campground before we get to that. So the goal is to get that person on sooner than later.
And we could potentially have that candidate ready by January thirtieth, next Monday. So I guess at that point, I would like to have that as actually a regular, you know, special city council meeting so we could act on that if we're ready to, just to get him on board a little quicker, that person.
Next Monday.
Should we do the workshop before then and so we can kind of chat about it beforehand?
Certainly can.
Yeah, does that make sense? Schedule a workshop and then post for a special meeting following that, so we can just act on all those things right away?
I think that's a great idea.
Get it taken care of.
I think it's a great idea, actually, yeah.
Okay.
I guess it's always nice to nail down that city council time, so I mean, that's the action point meeting, so I mean.
Then we better be efficient in our council workshop, right?
Six or five?
Yeah, you probably better go five or five thirty.
I think so.
Can everybody make five work? Five and seven? Okay, let's do five and seven then.
Let's make that a motion then.
I'll make the motion that we schedule a council workshop at five o'clock, followed by a special city council meeting at seven.
Okay, Kyle, uh, makes a motion and, and Jackie seconds the motion for a workshop prior to our meeting, special meeting Monday. Uh, so I think we kind of killed two birds with one stone.
Motion first. Call for a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, for all, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
There you go.
Motion carries.
Good to go.
Yeah, so I think we kind of covered the city treasurer position in there, that same, same thing. Uh, then the next, uh, the next thing is the MMUA, uh, Tom Bol. Then the next, the next thing is the MMUA, Tom Bolt's Memorial Scholarship Program that Bob O'Trimba's son actually participated in and he got, I think, second place in the state. If you want to kind of explain what your thoughts are on that, Bob?
Sure, we belong to the MMUA, Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association. We've utilized their training multiple times. They've actually participated with us in negotiations and meetings with Minnesota Power when we talk about wholesale power and their very strong agency that we work with on a daily basis. And they've got a scholarship program and it's $5,000 that they budget for all of the seniors throughout the state of Minnesota. And typically, local utilities will host a local winner. And last year, we've been doing this a few years, two years ago, we never received applicants. Last year, there was one applicant and I removed myself from that selection committee and my son was selected, he was the only applicant and he, that local winner then goes on to the state level on the MMUA statewide scholarship program and there's, I think, four scholarships offered for that total of $5,000. So one thing I'm gonna recommend is the city of peers actually sponsor a local scholarship winner and then actually put a dollar amount with that, just coming from our municipal utility. And I sent an email out and I have several reasons in there. To me, the big thing is communication with our residents, our customers, that hey, this is a municipal utility. These profits are coming back into the city to lower taxes, keep, maintain our parks and obviously expand our other businesses. That's what we're doing right now, is expanding the golf course through those profits without having to borrow money at 6% or 7% interest, so. I just feel like it'd be a great goodwill gesture towards our school as well, just for the fact that they're our two largest customers. I mean, that's another reason, so. I guess my thought is $500, just because that's a nice, I feel like, fair number, but it's up for discussion.
But what I was thinking is that, the one thing I like about it is that we're giving it to somebody locally in peers. So that, that's the number one thing I think we should, we should focus on. I, I've noticed in the past that we will give some, no, no offense, but to Morrison County or to other, other donations, to things outside of peers. And that's maybe something we should take a look at, maybe concentrate more on, on scholarships for people within the town. So, and I'm actually, I'm in, I'm in favor of this scholarship given this, but maybe if for future conversation, that we actually have a budget for scholarships, because we're gonna be getting hit, we're getting hit with them all the time. So if we give, if we give a limit that we're gonna give out $2,000 for the whole year, then we're gonna give out $2,000. So if we're, if we gave it out by July, we were out of scholarship money. But I think our number one focus is to give the scholarships in our home town.
Couldn't we just make this part of our, like, donation budget?
Yeah, we have a donation budget, just put it inside the budget.
I'm not sure we've used that in the last couple of years anyway. So I, I'm totally in favor of this one and I think we just pencil it in as something that always happens and I'm, I agree. Goes to a student from, from our community and I think it's for a good cause, so we'll just pencil it in there. I guess if we have to not sponsor something else because of this one, I think that would probably be okay. Everybody agrees with that? I'll make the motion then that we move forward with implementing a $500 scholarship for the MMUA Tom Bovet Scholarship at the local level, I guess, for any student here that would apply for Pierce, correct?
The comics motion?
I'll second it.
Jackie seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
We don't need to have, and this is awful that it can carry, we don't have to have a resolution or anything for that kind of stuff for scholarships.
I guess I haven't.
Because it's not a donation, we're actually like instituting something?
I'll have to double check on that, that's a good point.
If we don't, then that's fine, but I just wanted to make sure we're following the rules with that.
It's a good point.
It is.
We just need to pass a resolution, we can do it at the next one then.
Uh, speaking of donations, I think we got one for Pine Grove Zoo Membership Donation Request. I don't know if you want to cover that, Bob?
It's something the city's done since, for quite a while. 2019 was the first time the city started donating to that and it was $100 each year.
Now, is this something that comes out of the donation funder word you guys brought up?
It is. And that's actually coming up on your packet.
Okay.
You'll be able to see it, that's what this is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
And it tells you, lists everybody that had it.
Should show who we've given to in the past. Running, I think.
From page 42. We'll be able to tell if you look at your page number.
Sideways ones, it's hard to read.
Yeah, because last year we had like 1,300 left over.
Yeah.
More than enough to add that 500.
Any more thoughts?
I'll make a motion to continue donating to Pine Grove Zoo, the $100 that we did prior.
Okay, Jackie makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Kyle seconding the motion for the donation to Pine Grove Park for $100. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried. Uh, now the, the gravel pit project is the next thing on the agenda. Do you have to give us the background kind of on that?
Sure. So at our December park board meeting, the park board discussed the possibility of applying for two separate grants. Two years in a row now, we've applied for the LCC Mar grant, which is the lottery money, this state donate, or grants out for environmental type projects. Grant that we're looking at now, in addition to that, is a DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant. I have both of the information on those grants in your packet. And I guess at this point, I would like assistance from S E H. They've helped us in the past as far as putting those, that grant together for LCC Mar. And they have a grant writer on staff that's familiar with the project and would be able to work through both those grants with us. I believe the last time it was between 1,500 and $2,000 for the work on the one grant, so I would anticipate something close to that and we have a general engineering agreement with them, so we just pay them on an hourly basis, so. I would imagine it would be in that $2,000 range for, for that work.
Very reasonable cost for writing a grant. It's very average, writing is between 1,500 to 3,000, depending on how big your grants are.
So with both of these grants, there's gonna be a resolution at some point, so we're not at that point yet, but I guess at this point, I'd like approval from the council to work with S E H towards moving forward with those grants.
And this is a matching grant, so it's 50/50?
The DNR, the Minnesota DNR grant is 50/50, the LCC Mar is 100% grant. Both state funds.
And are we gonna modify our approach or our application or anything that we did the last couple of years?
I feel like we have to. I mean, there's, the first time we were super close and we didn't modify it much. And we didn't even get close to the round two the second time, so it was kind of odd that way too, so we might just have a fresh start on both.
Which grant do you think we have best, best chance of getting?
I didn't think the LCC Mar grant either year was a great fit for what we're doing, because it's more environmental. The outdoor recreation grant is for outdoor recreation opportunities, that's what we're providing. We're providing campground, we're providing parks, outdoor space for people to enjoy, trails, all the things that our project will have, so. But again, it's just for the purchase of the property and then creating a master plan, so in that $200,000 range.
That's what we've put as our purpose, correct?
Correct.
Do we think we'd have a better chance if we already owned that gravel pit?
So that DNR grant is a $600,000 project grant, so 300, 300, up to. If we own that property, we would definitely go after some engineering and then, yeah, some campground expansion at that point, because that would be our first revenue generator.
So Kyle said, do we, is it, do we need, is it better if we own it prior to the thing, to the grant? Or, or is that something we use the grant money to actually purchase it with?
That's the idea right now, is to use it for land acquisition.
Right.
If I'm on that committee, I guess I'd have to look at it, you know, at the application. We would have a great chance, I think, if we own that land to go after recreational building projects, for sure.
That was just one thought that I thought I heard now in the last year and a half. Had we already owned it, maybe easier than trying to apply for funds to actually purchase land. So you'd actually be looking now to just improve it and do the things that may fit their grant, you know, requirements, I guess, so. Just a thought.
That's all.
I would make a motion that we proceed with S E H in assistance with the grant applications for the LCC Mar and the DNR grants.
Jackie makes a motion.
I'll second that.
Don's gonna second the motion. All in favor of the motion to apply for both of the grants that we discussed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next one, topic is near, and dear to my heart, it's the garage sale days in peers. And it's on our discussion, just to talk about that, we've had some negative feedback in the last year or so because we've been combining it with, with Little Falls. Little Falls and the same date, and what happens is everybody goes to Little Falls and nobody comes to Pierce just because it's a bigger community and there's a lot more of a draw to Little Falls than there is here in Pierce. And we've sacrificed because of that, some sales. And I know that it's, it's a lot of extra work for the, for us to handle it here at the city. So I'm, Irving and Jeanette Litke wrote a really nice article in a letter to the editor of the Morrison County Record, basically stating that. And I think we should, my, my view is that, and I can reach out to them too. Reach out to them and see if they would want to get together with a couple other people, maybe Margie Leidelt. And then they could put a team together and actually put it together. We could have maybe maps here at City Hall, so people could come by, because they love those maps. And then they can find it where everybody's, everybody's at. And that, that's my two cents on that. I don't know if you guys got, any thoughts on that, Don?
I.
I will say, not to interrupt, I do want to have our garage sale days and the weekend city cleanup still.
That's right.
Whenever we do that, we, you know, I'd like to continue that on. I've been kind of taking care of that the last, what, three, four years now and it's, we've realized that doing it on that weekend actually draws a lot to city cleanup and it's a lot for our city. So just maintaining that and then also making sure that we still have the, the clothing and then the brush cleanup and making sure we're making it a whole, a whole weekend, right?
So, so can I work with you on that? I mean, can, are you flexible with the dates that they do the cleanup thing?
So is the weekend before Memorial Day? So it's the Saturday before.
Always the weekend before, so then if Little Falls has with their garage sale, that's the weekend before. I guess we'll have to talk about it.
Well, we've moved the cleanup day to match garage sale days.
Oh, good, okay.
So my opinion would be if we're gonna move garage sale days, we would move that.
Good.
And that, that works for me. It used to just be earlier and it was like, it was almost.
It was always too drizzly.
Yeah, it was cool.
It was in April.
Yeah, it was cool.
May is a good month and I'd like to keep it in, in May, if we can. A good month to keep, to get things out of people's houses and do that, so I'm more than willing to work with you on that.
How much time, Jackie, do we have to pick that date for the, for the cleanup stuff?
Well, we need to schedule something with the solid waste committee soon.
We usually meet in February for solid waste and we decide that, but but we've been using that, like I said, that second or third week in May and it's worked out really nice as far as weather and
Right.
people having a chance to go through their things.
The weekend, we didn't do, the reason why we didn't do the weekend before that was because it was Mother's Day weekend and always fishing opener. So that was kind of that, why we didn't choose that second weekend in May, just from that standpoint.
Yeah, the Mother's Day is kind of a tough thing. Sometimes the fishing opener might be a good thing in case, if it, if there's a lot of women like garage sale.
Yeah, but all the women take their, have, make their husbands come and drop off all their junk from their yard.
That's right.
A lot of them, what doesn't go in the garage sale, goes into a dumpster, goes in a jack's truck.
Yeah, there you go.
Do not keep it.
Well, and then I don't know if you need a motion, but I would totally be in favor of you guys working with the committee or adding a couple people to try and spear the, you know, it used to be a, I think, a Pierce commercial club thing and they kind of lost interest and said, well, we don't really want to take charge of it, so it kind of got dumped on the city. City kept it going now for a few years and so if you can head up a committee.
Yeah, I'm totally willing to meet with you on it, John, and we can kind of figure it out, just let me know.
Okay, so Kyle makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Don seconded that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say, all opposed, no, nobody, motion carries. So the next thing on the agenda is the grand opening for the golf course fundraiser. That, something you'd like to talk about?
It's kind of your idea, so I'll let you run with it.
Okay, so I was, I was throwing around some ideas as far as for fundraiser, for the opening of the, of the golf course. I talked to several people in Pierce and they thought maybe that we could maybe do, either do like a, a raffle. So what you do is the first, the first foursome that goes on the golf course, we would have a raffle, they put in 50 bucks or 100 bucks or something to raffle off the, the first four people to, as a fundraiser. Another thing that I was thinking about, and it'd be like, really, I look at the golf course and the RV park together, kind of, I mean, it's all in, all one, but the other thing we could do is create some type of a, a donation thing where if somebody donates, or a business barb, somebody donates so much money, they would get either a brick in the playground, in the playground area, or if we have a retaining wall in the RV park, we'd put, put their name on their, the retaining wall, on the rock, but come up something to, to recognize the people that are giving us, are donating money. Part of my whole reason for this is, actually, it was like what Galen was talking about, it's about getting community involvement. We need to get the community involved, then there's less people talking and not hearing what's going on, they're more involved with it. And it actually makes them part of the process and they, and I think the people in Pierce would, would really, would really appreciate, would appreciate it. The other thing that I was thinking was, and, and actually Kyle's kind of spearheaded that thing a couple weeks ago, or month ago, so we kind of talked about it, is going to the Lions Club, going to the commercial club, going to the Knights, Knights of Columbus and, and working with them on getting either some charitable gambling money, Freedom Fest money and have the clubs participate in, in the growth of Pierce as well, because the clubs benefit from, from the golf course, they benefit from the RV park. And I think that is something that would really, really be nice if we could work on something like that and get more involvement in the community and as a matter of fact, the Lions Club did a breakfast the other, last week and it was dedicated to Joyce Lane Frost and the donations went to Holy Trinity. They said it was, they, they had a lot of people donate money, didn't, didn't even eat breakfast. So they were more, more, more involved with the actual donation than they were with, with eating. And they said that's the first time that's ever happened. So I know the Lions Club is looking at incorporating something in with all of, whether it's a fish, fish fry, breakfast for, and actually announce the donation and what it's going for, because it, it's, it's a lot, it's been working really, actually is really successful, a really successful event for us that I'm a part of, part of the Lions Club. So I guess I, I did talk to Bob about this, I want to talk about maybe starting to look, at least take a hard look at some of this stuff. I know the commercial club, I, I know they're probably raring to go with something. I could talk, I could, I could talk to the Lions Club. If anybody is members of any local clubs, I think it's maybe something we should start putting together. We, I, I would, we could even come to some type of presentation to give them, to show at these meetings as well. Make it a little more formal if we wanted to, or make it more informal. But I know, Kyle, what, what do you think about that? Because I know you, you're part of the commercial club.
Yeah, yep, part of the commercial club, so like our plan there. Yeah, yep, part of the commercial club. So like our plan there as a board, we've got certain funds that we've kind of dedicated to giving back to the community in different ways. And so this year, you know, we really didn't have anybody come forward. We kind of had to go out and seek people, like, hey, do you need anything? And so we were like, I kind of threw it in there, like, hey, the city could use a new park or something that the community, the youth, you know. That was kind of our big thing and, and the board was all, all for that. So I brought it to the table to say, are we, would we partner with the commercial club? And this would maybe be a long-term thing, because instead of just giving a certain amount for one year, we think we'd rather say, let's pick a bigger project that may cost, you know, thousands of dollars. And let's set aside a certain amount each and every year, set a goal or a deadline, and then pick the project and kind of work towards that. And we dedicate that each year, work our way.
We're very fortunate that we live in the community that we live in, because there's a lot of people that want to help all. Actually, we're, we're really blessed, blessed as a community to have that. And actually, Kylie reminded me of something else. It could be a, a three, five-year project. So we just, you know, like you're kind of stating, so it isn't like, let's just say $5,000. Maybe it won't be for one year. It'd be something that the clubs would work towards. And so every year for the next five years, they would donate so much money. And I, I can't remember, I think we discussed it, that we could actually create a budget for it or a special place.
Dedicated fund.
Yeah, dedicated fund thing, so we could put that money in there. So people can say, well, how much money do we have in it? And people can actually see how much money we're, we're raising. And I think, once again, that's a good thing too. It's about the transparency and everything else.
I had brought a couple of years ago, you know, I used to work at, at Horizon Health and turning the park up by the golf course into a multi-generational playground. Because a lot of grandparents are watching their, their grandkids and doing a lot of that. And the sand can be very uneven and, you know, doing those kind of things. So just revitalizing some of our areas to be more useful for multi-generation kids and grandparents and everything in between. And so I think it would be a really good opportunity for our city, because we do have a lot of retirees and we do have a lot of really young kids. It's like a very big mix in our community, which is so special, to be able to do things to keep our town thriving and integrating, you know, grandparents and young kids and parents and all that.
So Jackie has a perfect answer, answer for you. It's called pickleball.
Well, I'm always willing to learn something.
We need, we need a pickleball court. Did you have any, anything on that subject, Don?
Nope. I agree with everything. I think putting money aside for a bigger project for the benefit would be good.
Yeah, so is this something that we want to talk further at the, at our?
At a workshop.
Yeah, at our workshop, maybe add that to, I think that'd be something I'd like to have addressed. Okay, so board, next thing on the agenda. Oh, one thing really quick on that, the golf course thing again. Bob had brought up, I think it was, was it the key fan, key fan man, common man, Dan Cole? Where he's kind of getting a liking to this area a little bit. And who knows, Bob says he knows him really good, so.
I don't know. But he's the unofficial ambassador of Minnesota Golf.
There you go.
And I know he has connections to Sue's Drive and, and this and that. But I mean, it might not be that radio station, but at least have a, a nice promotional, and maybe it's the spring of 25 when we're full-blown open. But that's something our clubhouse manager can work on off-season, an event like that, so.
See, the one that kind of adopted the Buckman Billy goats this year?
That's right. It's another good connection to Piers and, yeah.
Yeah, he says he drives through here every weekend or something. So he seems to like what we have to offer.
Right. So I just wanted to mention that too, that there's a lot of really good ideas and there's some ways to, for involvement. So the next thing would be board member qualifications on the agenda.
So I put in your packet, the planning commission, park commission, and also board of appeals and adjustments, describes on there about residency requirements. And there's been discussion now that Joe Bell is currently not on the park board. That was approved at the last meeting, but about bringing on potentially business owners in Piers. So if the city wanted to change that ordinance, that would be an option, I guess, at this point. But the park board was designated at the last meeting, so.
It was.
Yep.
I, I feel like that if you have a business, if you have a business in Piers, you should be able to be on, on any of the boards as well as, as well as a resident. My, and I think as, as far as people that are currently on the boards, or whatever board it is for Piers, if they're not a member, don't live in Piers or have a business, I feel they should be grandfathered, grandfathered in till the end of their term or when they choose not to. Just for the fact that, once again, we've been through enough crap that we should, we need to kind of pull everything together and, and move forward. And I think that's the best way, by grandfathering in, somebody that's a member that doesn't live here or doesn't have, doesn't have a business here, that's the best and most positive way to, to move, move forward. And I don't know how we, if we can, if we can do that, Bob, if we have to make a motion or however.
I would, it's an ordinance change, so I would check with our attorney and do the necessary postings and whatnot.
Yeah, I guess for me it would be, you know, making a motion to make that change for it being a resident of the city or a business owner of the city. And then seeing what that would entail, as well as grandfathering in current, current residents and then going forward with that. But I am a really big believer that our business owners deserve to have a voice in our community. We've worked in this council to support our businesses through COVID and all that we have done for that. And so I wholeheartedly believe that they deserve to have a vote. So I think that at minimum, adding them as able to serve on these boards would be, I think, at minimum.
So Jackie makes a motion to, to.
To basically change the ordinance.
Change the ordinance. Yeah, there you go.
Start the process anyway. It's gonna be some language.
To allow the city business owners to be a part of our boards.
And to finish their terms if they were to sell.
Yep, and finish their terms.
I'll second if there isn't one yet.
Kyle seconds the motion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for Bob to look into adding business owners onto board seats and to grandfather in current board members that have businesses but don't live, live in the city. Okay, so the next one would be, oh yeah, the next agenda is a reminder of the local board of appeals and equalization training. We need to have that completed by February 1st. And once the.
Looks like you'd expect.
I've got to take mine yet, but otherwise I think all three are.
Have you done yours? Have you got that?
I have not. I should probably get that done.
Dave was on it.
I would like to proud, I would like to proudly say again.
I expire on seven one of this year, so then I just have to take it. I, I don't need to take it this year. I need to take it by February 1st next year.
I took the, I took it. It wasn't, it wasn't too hard. I mean, it, it's common sense stuff.
Except I tried to do it on my phone the first time.
Oh, no.
It logged me out nine times and I literally spent six hours trying to take them to our course.
Okay, so department reports, we, Eric isn't, Eric Henneken isn't here tonight, but we have the next best thing. We have Erica Gafka here to talk, is that right? Did I say Eric? Gafki? To talk about.
We'll go with Gafka though, because I didn't realize that's gonna stick now.
There's a K E, I don't know.
Hey, Gafka, how's it going with you?
Uh, Eric, how's that? You got five minutes, by the way.
How do you spell that? G A F K A, Gafka?
All right. How are you guys doing tonight?
Great.
No, not too bad. I guess Bob and I were talking over, just relooking at the loader option for Town. I did call and get a, a, an up-to-date estimate or quote on it, on the same order we talked about prior, the D L Dusan, D L 250. I believe it went up from the last time, the other quote, but just kind of sticking that in your guys' ear a little bit there. I guess Bob and I talked about the dedicated funds too a little bit. According to what we were talking about, we did have, there was enough in there to do it, but that would deplete some of the areas. This is a nice one, isn't it? The one that would, one that would get depleted. Watch, that was, that's money for our plow truck, in a sense, right? I believe so. And we, him and I talked a little bit about two of the plow truck we do have. I mean, it's got good bones to it yet. There's really no need to do much. We could keep that truck and not have to buy another one for any reason. If we did decide to move forward with the loader, just because if we did get one of those, that would take away some of the work that that truck has to do already, so. Along with probably, you know, with taking on some new stuff too, as well with it. I'm not sure if you guys had any more questions on the loader end or not. I just wanted to bring that back up to attention with you guys. Otherwise, we're just gonna keep clearing snow out of the way. Everything else seems to be going good. The ice rinks are getting to be a challenge to get going good this year. But it's supposed to cool down eventually, so hopefully we'll get some good ice made then, but. Was there anything else?
I guess part of our thought process as far as buying a new piece of equipment versus used is we're able to buy at quite a discount compared to what contractors can buy for, because we can utilize our source well, our state bids. And part of our thought process is actually buying a new piece of equipment with a three-year warranty and probably 20 to $30,000 discount compared to what contractors can buy them for. And then actually turn around and sell those within three years and then purchase another one. So we continually have that under warranty. We just feel like the cost of ownership will stay low at that point. And it's different now, I feel like, because the used market on equipment is so high. But at the same time, this would be a piece of equipment that eventually we'd like to get some kind of a plow for it. So we put out two, two operators right away. Typically, if it's done snowing at midnight, we have one person in the plow truck and then the second operator comes in at four o'clock for sidewalks and whatever else. If we had a pusher or some kind of a plow for this, we could actually do all the dead ends and a number of the streets. It just has two pieces of equipment out at the same time. And having done it for 15 years, if you're one person out there at midnight, it gets quite lonely and it does get to a point where there's zero backup, besides a Dave Sear or other contractors that have equipment. But to me, it just allows the city to have extra firepower, if you will, for one of our most important operations. We keep two pumper's, we keep two tankers in our fire department arsenal for that reason. And obviously, even in that situation, we can call mutual aid and quite often do. So I mean, it's something that, this is what we do as street maintenance. And I just feel like a new loader is the way to go. We've talked about a used loader. I just feel like if we want to get a good used loader, we're still gonna be at that 80, 90, $100,000 range. And we're really not gaining that much at that point, but. One thing we would like to use this summer, this loader, we could use quite frequently on the golf course expansion. We're gonna be building cart paths. We're gonna be moving sand around, that greens mix. It's gonna be 12 inches of greens mix on every green. We have dirt over by the pond right now that needs to get loaded and moved. So part of the discussion that's coming here shortly is another full-time maintenance staff that would be shared with the golf course and public works. Right now, our part-time public works operator, Phil Scribner, is taking on another business, taking on a business. So those part-time hours are gonna get cut. We just feel like going with 18 holes. There's a number of projects that Zach is able to do himself because of his expertise. And if we can add staff, we can actually do a lot of these projects ourself, just like we did the upgrade to the, the controllers on the existing nine this summer, so. Again, we're gonna be adding equipment, adding people, but we have not done that over the years. And we have been adding streets. We've been adding a lot of electric customers, so it's been getting busier in the city. So I don't know if we want to act, I mean, if the council wants to act on anything tonight. But like I said, that discussion of another maintenance employee is gonna be within the next month or two. Want to talk about it at a workshop or?
That's fine. We just gotta be careful we don't make that too long, so we can get done that seven. But we could, if there's time, put it on there. If we can't get to, we can't get to it. But what can we sell our current tractor for?
Part of our current thought is, I think it's 30, it's not in there, it's 35 to 40,000, but our thought right now is actually keep that until we're done building the golf course. We could possibly use it for seeding, dragging, disking, stuff like that, so.
But after that, we think maybe, or?
We think maybe. Zach is thinking actually of having a smaller tractor for, once we have 18 holes. We don't need that, something that big, so. And part of the thought process here is too, is sharing equipment with Rich, Perry, Sue and Water as to where we could possibly, eventually down the road, get some mutual aid, labor from them to help us plow snow or. Because they own a tractor too, and the idea would be for them to get rid of the tractor, so.
I, yeah, I'm kind of, I got mixed emotions on, on, on a used one versus, versus a new one. I think we need one, you know? It'd be nice to have one. I typically, when I, when I'm kind of perplexed, then I'll go to the, who I feel are the, the experts. And in this case, I think it's maybe Don, because he, because he deals with that. You know, he, he's on the committee, he deals with that. He's very, actually, I think you're very knowledgeable in the subject too. And I do. And I, so, and that's something we can touch base, touch base on, obviously at the meeting. Yeah, at the workshop. But I think Don's got some really good ideas as well. It's kind of where I sit on it.
Okay. Anything else, Eric?
No, I don't got anything else. I see you guys got something for me.
Sick of snow yet?
Yep. Yeah, it's all right. It'll keep coming.
Yeah, don't worry. It ain't going away fast.
I have the W2s, 1099s complete, working on the rest of the January report, so just plugging away. I mean, at this point, the hiring process, we're gonna be looking at presenting to the city council the possibility of having an assistant clubhouse superintendent, assistant clubhouse manager.
Manager, yes.
So, and that's some discussion, I guess, at a workshop, or we've introduced it at a packet level anyway. So that's gonna be coming in the future and then also another maintenance employee, so. That's gonna help me. It really is. I mean, there's a lot of projects out there and we've talked about it during the interviews, after the interviews. There's a lot of potential for good revenues down there if it's managed properly. So I think we're moving in that direction, I really do, so. And that will bring in money to the city and help our taxpayers, so.
That's what the ultimate goal is.
That's it.
So make a motion to adjourn, reduce the adjourn.
You gotta look that way if you're saying.
And there again, I'm gonna make you sit and stew for a while, because we've only been here, holy crud. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Must be late.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed?